Okay. What's making most of the return rate? Reopen it or just go?
No, just go.
Okay. Motion is, on review of Mr. Clemente's appeal from an administrative decision filed on four ten twenty-five, ZVA fines and rules that it lacks subject matter jurisdiction to hear this appeal because Article four of the town zoning ordinance involves innovative land use control and by virtue of RSA six seventy-five five, section three, this board may not hear an appeal from the planning board decision involving innovative land use control.
I will suspend that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What do we got here?
I'll say aye.
Oh, you said aye, okay.
Now I just have it. You're standing in check?
I would say talk to your lawyer.
Yeah, I'm kinda, kinda at a loss because the lawyer said that the New Hampshire method was I had to see the zoning before I could go to Superior Court.
No, he, he, he misunderstood that and it's a technicality, but because that subdivision did in some innovative land use controls, it sets them up so that you have to go to the ZVA as opposed to coming here.
No, 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 just, just stop if you don't know the rules. So you have to start with the ZVA no matter what. Now that we've declined to see it, now you can take it to Superior Court. That's all you need to know.
Because if he goes innovative things that they did.
Yes, it will, there'll be, there'll be an opinion that you'll get in a couple of days.
What were the innovative things that they did?
It's in the zoning regulations.
Leave it has to do with conservation.
Conservation subdivision.
The conservation subdivision.
So you mean they kept some trees under the power lines? That's why you're innovative. What about all of us on South Street and all that water? That has something to do with them keeping a conservation subdivision, conservation area under the power lines on South Main Street?
Something you can discuss with your counsel.
Well, this is a town document that the planning board supposedly was supposed to.
That's their application for a subdivision.
Right here it states, plans for drainage and or soil, erosion and sediment control, nothing.
So there was.
So how is this?
Because, because of the zoning ordinance that that was done under, we don't have any authority whatsoever. As, as is ZVA.
So the planning board was it and even if they were sure to their duties, that there's nothing that can be done except the citizens gotta go hire a lawyer to, to take care of what the town didn't do? Is, I mean, is that what was said?
We're just saying our board has no jurisdiction to make any changes or.
Unfortunately, that is how it comes.
So where are you, where are you defining your board as toward the C P? The zoning board, the board of adjustments, where is the, where is your title? I mean, and this one now?
This is the zoning board of adjustments.
Okay.
So in most matters, the zoning board takes, we have to hear the case first. So even if you wanted to skip the town and want to go straight to Superior Court, the Superior Court will tell you no, start here. So you did the right thing by starting here, following what your legal advice said. Now that you've been declined, that we can't hear it because of the, the special circumstances of it, you take that to your lawyer with a decision letter that somebody will send you, I don't know who's writing it, somebody will write it from this board. And then you take that to your legal counsel and then your legal counsel will help you go for the next steps.
So is the conservation part a loophole? That's a loophole? So if you get land anywhere and you say, well, that part right there is a conservation, so you can't do anything, you can't have us doing the water, anything like that. Here's the problem. When that water comes off that, Assistant of Troy, subdivision, not Assistant of Troy, when that water comes off their land, it hits South Street's tar and that's the town's water. That's not their water. There is no ditch, there's no drainage, culverts and we're all living it.
It seems like the town's not looking after what's actually going to happen.
So when you talk about we're gonna have to, we can't block culverts because any water that come over the road or under the road, undermining the road, is gonna be up to the town of Troy.
And then the town will go after whoever, where it started at. So if someone blocked it or made it go farther faster, the town will go after them at that point for the repair of the road slash culvert.
Okay, so if that doesn't happen, if it's just water, because now they've uprooted trees and put in their buildings and now there's just water everywhere because they don't have a culvert either. They, I don't know how they're gonna get a driveway in there.
That's what they're gonna have to figure out because if they, if they, this is just, if they, the same with my driveway. So there's water that rushes to the road and I have a culvert underneath my driveway currently. Culvert was put in years ago. It was my responsibility to keep it clean. I moved in, it was not taken care of, so I had it replaced. I have to keep it clean still because it's my responsibility, it's my culvert. They're gonna have to put a culvert in or they're gonna have to have to replace their driveway every time it washes out and it's gonna be on their dime. Now, if they were, they mess up the road because they put in a culvert and it messes up the road, then they're gonna have to pay for the repair of the road as well. And in any aspect of that, the town sit, is, we will wait and see what happens with those types of situations. Because there's whatevs that are always out there and we can plan. Now, if they didn't meet the check mark, that's, that's on your case to prove. And if they didn't do that with your legal counsel, you discuss it with them. You might have a case to have them put something in and it'll have to come down from Superior Court.
And/or you're opening up the town for suits because if the planning board approve this and we have water problems after they do their building, I'm not gonna sue builder. I'm gonna sue the town because they let it take place.
And that would be within your right.
But why, why have this vicious circle?
Because there's certain things the zoning board can get involved in, but there's other things that we can't. So this subdivision, which is the part you're fighting, which, it's, it is what you're fighting basically, it's a subject.
I'm not fighting subdivision. They can build forty houses over there, it doesn't matter. But what does matter is how it's affecting our property and our building.
And that would have to be with what, like what I'm saying, is you have to prove to the courts that part. We can't tell them, oh, you can't have your thing because there's, there are special clauses put onto it. And you have the paperwork, I, I mean, right now, just looking at it from outside, your lawyer told you to do the right thing. Start here. Once here is done, you can call your lawyer today and say they declined it and then he would probably have paperwork for you to sign to send to Superior Court almost instantly. If they didn't meet their requirements, what they're supposed to, that's again, them not meeting their requirements. It's the property owner's requirements. If the planning board pushed it on and said, yes, it's good and all that, that can happen sometimes.
Where are those requirements documented? Because it's not in the planning board documentation that is filed in the town. Because I got every piece of paper that the planning board filed. There's nothing in there showing me what erosion control is, sediment control, floodwater damage, nothing.
That's all been left up to the builders who they hired to make the plans. So.
Wow. So, so the town is turning their responsibility over to a builder and we don't have anything to say about?
So, the thing that I learned moving here, this is the live for your die state. That is how it goes. The town has so much they can do, but I can't stop you from doing whatever you wanna do on your property to a limit. The, they're not, if they don't, if, if you saw plans that had swells in it and all that, if they don't uphold to that when the, the building inspector comes to check that, then they don't get a occupancy permit. Which means they have to spend more money to build what they're supposed to.
Okay, so where, where are those?
The plans?
The plans with the swells and everything?
We've not, it's very, it's very common for subdivision, site plan, um, for the applicants to ask for waivers. And if we look at it and we say this waiver being reasonable, that they were not working on, then we can't waive it.
That is absolutely amazing.
Yeah, after.
That is absolutely amazing considering a major concern the citizens have is the water control. And the planning board waives it.
All these people were there and you.
The town was derelict in their responsibility to the citizens.
Um, that's where, when, hold on a second. That's where, when it comes time for elections, you vote out the members who are on the board. You go out, go and try and get someone else on those boards.
Seems like there's a fix in here somewhere.
There is. You have to go to Superior Court because the, the planning, or the zoning board has said we can't see this because of the special conditions. That's just unfortunately what it is. Superior Court can step inside, step and get involved and they can put a stop to it. And then they can force all the other subjects, all the stuff to be done as well.
Okay. Now, when I go file, does this put this show on hold as far as them building and so on and so forth?
I don't know about what's Superior Court. That is a very good question. That one I do not.
Your lawyer said it does.
If the lawyer says it does, I would trust your lawyer because I, I'm not a legal advisor and I've never personally gone to Superior Court with.
Because this is gonna be hard to deal with after the fact. I mean, if they go ahead and start building and they don't have the proper water drainage and flood controls and so on and so forth, we're still stuck in the middle of it. And the town is, is, basically the town is responsible, not the builder.
Yeah.
Because the, the town has told the builder, you've met all of our requests.
And the builder offered everything. At the bottom of that, uh, slip there, it says, we'll give you water studies, we'll give you environmental impact studies and, and we'll give you anything you want. That's what it says at the bottom of the application. And no one asked for anything. So the builder is not responsible here.
No, the builder would still be responsible. But at the town, the planning board waived it. Again, it's, it comes down to if the planning board is its own separate board from this board. They represent citizens of the town. And if they didn't do their proper due diligence within their job, come next year, vote them out. That's just unfortunately how it works with these things. Just like if I don't do my job in two years' time or not, three years' time, you could vote me out and have someone else come in and should do it as a selectman. It's hard and it's a pain in the butt, but not every person thinks the same way. I know Eddie doesn't think the same way as I do. I, I use her because she's sitting right in front of me. She's not on any board, she's a town employee. If I picked anyone else, they'd probably pick back. But that's, that is, and I think personally, I think there is an issue with the whole thing. But legal standpoint, our hands are tied. This board's hands are tied.
Then the town government needs to take a look at this.
And you can file a, a complaint against it and drop it in the complaint box and then it'll be read at the selectmen's meeting and then we can have more words with the planning board about it. But I don't think there's much gonna be done from that side either. Because they are their own governing board.
Did the planning board look at any, any water studies, any, anything?
No, no.
They did not look at any, we, we were not provided any water studies.
But was somebody, did somebody waive them?
And they did, yeah.
Yeah, well, we, when anyone submits a site plan or subdivision, there are the checklist.
Yep.
And, uh, planning board obviously waived any, then though, if someone do, you have, um, like, uh, if they're getting town water or whatever, then anything regarding well is usually waived because it's not.
And you waived the twelve percent grade that the state of Hampshire requires. So that was like a kiss of death for people at the bottom of the house.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I can't look at this.
You can't?
I can't.
Yeah, there's a twelve percent grade and you wait that the state of Hampshire requires. They don't go any more than twelve percent grade, I make that name and you waived it. Not even work waived it. So now they can do whatever they want and a lot of people, they're gonna be just in a puddle in their houses, they're gonna be destroyed and.
Miss Verne, I, I don't know what's gonna happen with our, all that water is going down the end of South Street. There's fifty million men. There's no culverts, there's no drainage, there's no sewers, there's no collection point and nothing.
You know, and I didn't, that's one thing I actually didn't think of. Like, there's the culverts coming down after they make the roads.
It's all, it's all.
Driveways, that's what I was gonna say. It's all, is there gonna be a basin or anything else or is it gonna be right in my driveway?
That, that's something we can't really answer here unfortunately. Like I said, we're, we, our hands are tied with this. Personally, we probably all are agreeing with you guys, but legally, if we would've said, yeah, the cabinet's gotta stop to this point, we would open the town up even for more lawsuits as well.
So the planning board never gets a second law? And the planning board is the ultimate decision?
We do.
No, so this certain subject, our hands are tied. Other subjects, we could address and reverse because it's been done several times in this town.
So all you have to do is say you have a conservation area and you're, yeah.
No, it's not just a conservation area, there's other aspects of it.
Okay, what, do you know what they were, what were they?
I can't without discussing legal matters and we're not allowed to discuss the legal matters. That was told to aspire the town.
Go ahead. I guess we're in public, let's, let's end the hearing and just have a little short public, public comment session. Okay, this hearing is over.
Motion didn't make a hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm, I'm currently here, I am at three eighty-six South Street. I bought it this past August. Not only was I shocked to see where they're gonna throw a house in septic system right in my face practically. I had my well tested yesterday from the state because I've been getting a lot of letters about the lovely PFAS situation. Two wells in my neighborhood have it in their well. These people that are our well, these people that are putting this house within the range of my well and my land, do they know about the PFAS situation? Because it is gonna creep over there and it's coming to my house. I can't sell my house without disclosing this. It brings my market value way down and now they're putting another house in a septic system in where it's soaked in there all the time.
When they drill, they're gonna make.
It's gonna frac horribly. My, my property's gonna be zero. It's already full of water. Where you, you, everybody let them on that little peninsula right in front of my house, they went, they okayed a septic, a well and a house there. Who suffers from that? Me.
The, the septic comes from the state, right? The septic, our, the state.
You know what? It doesn't matter. I believe if the state actually physically saw what they were doing, they would laugh at it. It's, it's absurd. My house is going to be worth nothing.
Yeah.
Yep. I've had to hire a lawyer. I've had to call the state over and over again. I've had people, the owners that used to own that house, they won't give back to me because they didn't tell me about this problem. What are you supposed to do? Who cleans it up?
Yeah, because they ran, supposedly the state ran out of money.
Troy ran out of money.
I wanted them to stop it.
But they're still getting money to clean it up.
Right.
So tell me where that money went.
Where is it?
Because the state, the state tells us that they're, they, they give the town of Troy money to clean up the PFAS.
So that's not correct.
Well.
And I, I will give you, I will give you my town's email and you can email me and I will get you in contact with the DES and EPA person. Uh, you're off of South and then, so you're towards.
The, the corner.
We're half the corner.
Part in Troy.
That's what I thought and.
But my well is in Troy. The house is right behind me, have their houses.
No, our whole house is in Troy. I weigh in.
Right.
But, I mean, let me figure out what my town email is and you can email me and I will send you the information to the person you can reach out to from the state and DES.
I see on the plans for, um, subdivision that they have to, when they sell a piece of the land, they have to tell the person that to disclose, yeah.
They, you're darn right, they do.
Yeah, so they, they, they had, planning board had them write that in that you have to disclose that the water is probably unsafe.
Well, it, it could, the water test make them that fine today, but it goes to the ground.
Yeah, because there's a point.
Over time, it goes to the ground.
Yeah, it moves around, right.
So, there's.
And it can come back fine today, but not next year.
Email me and then I will give you the contact information for DES slash EPA person. Because there, what you're talking about, I don't wanna get into it with the whole group, but there is, there is problems with the area and what you're talking about, there, the town didn't get money. It was actually the EPA spent the money itself to clean that area and they do testing constantly.
Maybe they did.
But, trust me, with how much they, they cost to clean that area, they did not get the town money. It's in the multi-million dollars.
I've talked to about every person there is in Concord. So EPA, everything.
I have, I have, I had the ear of somebody.
They all say money's been allocated.
Yeah, it's, it's, the money is not, it's to clean the, the dump site. That's all the money was allocated.
That's their house.
You, I know, you, I know exactly what you're talking about where it's at. That's why I said, give, shoot me an email and I'll, I'll reach out. I'll have the person that I've talked to reach out to you guys.
So they're just gonna go and tear up the earth in front of my house and have all that crap moving all my driveway into my yard? Lovely.
You're gonna go to Superior Court like.
Just lovely. Look Troy.
I think I know what the conservation area is because they spoke to it the last meeting that they had, I think. And it was a little area in the middle of all where they're gonna build the homes that they left untouched. That's their conservation.
So there's wetlands.
It's shit.
In front of my house, wetlands.
It's got less coverage than my driveway. I really don't understand the town. I'm, I'm, I'm kinda, I'm kinda confused. We have a government that's supposed to be working on our behalf and as you spoke to, we can't have this happening to our neighbors. This, this was already made up. I got a letter from the town administrator over a week ago saying, go, go hire, go do whatever you're gonna do with your water. Because we're not doing nothing. That's our town? Really?
This board just doesn't have any level of authority over this situation.
I understand that sir, but it's, it's just wrong. Just.
And that's, that's because of state law. It's not a Troy thing.
You know, if we heard it and if we made a decision, then the subdivider's gonna sue the town. You see the position that we're in here. It's a lose-lose with this board.
Well, hell with the subdividers, they're not living here presently. We are.
And we all feel that way personally too, but it, it, we have to go by these rules and they're very strict and they don't allow us wiggle room.
Because one little mess up on our part is a counter lawsuit and they make ten, twenty, thirty times the amount because they could win that easily.
If I was you guys, I'd pool all together and get an attorney. We're not in public session anymore, so I can say that. That's what I agree.
Okay, thank you for coming. Sorry.
Very sorry.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for listening.
Some of those people have lived in this town longer than any of us have been here.
Okay, any new business?
We have another hearing coming up.
The planning board has a new hearing tomorrow for subdivision.
So this might be something else in any board, how in the court, court eat most water. Just, just to, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm nobody in the grand scheme of things, but that's one piece that now you see how that affects every, how that simple decision to not review that. Yeah, they all make mistakes. I used to be on planning, but I would make mistakes.
It's ready, I can put it into a public hearing for the twentieth.
Yeah. Twenty for what?
Twentieth.
We have to do that.
I can do it a different day.
No, I'm good. I'm good with that.
What day?
Twentieth of May. It's another variance from Fieldstone. Um, and then there is new-ish business. There's a public hearing happening tomorrow that may come here later, but I, probably.
I don't know for the details.
That's okay. It, it's, it might come here later. I'm not sure it's confirmed.
Anthony Levick, he's gonna be coming back. It's gonna be, I, I didn't look at clearly, but I, he now has this housing situation to convolute him. Yes, where the drinking place was.
Yeah. They haven't met any setbacks on that one. They had another, what, or is it the same thing with the last units or something or? So they're resetting the exact paperwork?
And you know, I don't know, I'm sure you know because you know everything, but, um, some of these things can be post, we can postpone them, we can put them off, we can do walkarounds, we can, um, we don't have to decide, you know, like we're all on the spot. We can take it, we can accept it, we can review it.
When, when it's appropriate, yes.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, I don't know if, I didn't know if everyone realized that we could.
We could have a main meeting on site if we can tell them. Can we have a copy of their current, their new application versus their old application to see if there's something that's actually different? But if there's nothing, we have to do that here. There's nothing substantive. I mean, there's just.
Nice job on the, on your butters on this one, the one we just heard.
Thanks.
Nice job.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's cool. Is everyone okay? We're starting at six thirty on the twentieth?
Six thirty.
We should, we should probably schedule the, the public hearings for fifteen minutes after the meeting starts.
Yeah.
So do it for six forty-five.
Yeah, for the public.
Well, so I can do the.
But the meeting notice will say.
I can do the fancy thing that our amazing Carol Buzz where it's the, the meeting begins at, during the meeting that begins at, instead of, the public hearing is at six or six thirty.
The meeting begins at six thirty for this day. The public hearing starts at six forty-five.
Yeah, but if I do the meeting, during the meeting that begins at six thirty, it can be.
I consider it all part of the public hearing. Once the chair opens it up, we're in a public hearing. He, that's what, as opposed to a meeting. He doesn't open a meeting. No one, no board chair does.
No, we all do.
We all do.
For a meeting, not hearing?
We call the order every time. We say what time it starts and all that.
So you wanna, you wanna delay me fifteen minutes between a public meeting and a public hearing?
Yeah, it gives us time to clear, it gives us time to clear out all the pre-stuff and then gets us, because there's a lot of people who show up here slowly and trickle in. Substantial change, not just. You weren't brought out of here, don't you?
I think we all do. Every time you come, it's a little more disappointing.
Man, yeah, is that how you're feeling too?
So, any other business besides that one coming up? Communications and Ms. Lance or anything?
So did I hear you, someone say, and you agree that you're gonna give us the old and the new?
Yep. Yep.
Okay, because I'd like to see that.
Just for yes to review, not to discuss, to review.
We can, it would be helpful if we had the old minutes too, so we can see.
Yeah, I can do that here.
That, we have, we, we have to do that all at the hearing.
Yeah.
Well, no, I'm saying they've submitted it already. She can. Well, no, I'm saying, they, they've submitted it already. She can give us any information she wants.
Yes, we can, but we can't discuss it, except at the hearing. We can look at it yourself.
Yeah, yeah, for.
Yep.
And you said the budget, you didn't, you're gonna check and see about the fucking other postage, although this was pulled, what, today?
Uh, um, the first.
No, of course, four days ago. But should, the postage should hopefully be done.
There's one, I think this one hasn't been entered yet.
Postage, there should be postage, and there should be advertising for this.
But for today's meeting, what do we need to say?
Any postage.
Yeah.
It, it's a little delay on it, so we're still okay.
It still hasn't. It's, I, we have a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll talk to Sarah and see.
Do you see where we're at with her, her, because she's gotta, I know she's gotta wait for it to come in and get the charges, and then it goes in.
Yeah. Right, exactly, the, the.
So that might not reflect right now, but next meeting, it might be in the system. Next meeting is in two weeks.
It should reflect, hopefully, oh, I don't remember one of those statements.
I'm being, I'm being smart. I know, I, I know how it all works, but what's the chair, this like, I saw that all the time, I get it.
Uh, do you want a cop, new copy of this, this? What's that, is there a thing, actually, I want to use something updated. There was some laws that changed, there's a whole bunch of changes. Through the highlights, nothing's there?
Yeah, the, the new stuff was.
Changing something.
How many pages is it?
The whole thing?
Uh-huh.
Hard to say, because it's not, not.
Eighty-five, I think. I can also send that, if you want me to send, yes.
Do you have that as a PDF? M S, please. That makes it easier, because then if we wanna print it, it's not on the town's dime, it's our own dime.
Is, is you.
I'm gonna put it on a tablet or on my phone.
I do it.
I like, I like a pretty, pretty copy of this chair.
Yeah, I like, I like paper too. I must be already true.
No, you, all, I take all my, my meeting papers home, so I have quite a bit of papers. You go through as many meetings as I have to sit through, it's, it's interesting.
Boy, do I feel bad for those folks.
Yeah, right in here.
I also understand the rules.
Um, we done? I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. Meeting is adjourned.
A motion to adjourn?
Don't even need that. That one's.